Everybody, please stand for the flag salute. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Thursday, June 8, 2023. The time is now 7:00 PM. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, notice of this meeting was published in the December 8, 2022, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracco is absent, excused. Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present mayor except for Commissioner Petracco, he is absent, excused this evening.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We have regular meeting minutes for May 2, 2023, and May 16, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
We have executive session minutes for April 4, 2023, April 18, 2023, May 2, 2023, and May 18, 2023, Sessions 1 and 2.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Sorry, Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for minutes.
Communications, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We have three this evening. Conca Brothers Management, the Old Canal Inn has submitted an application for an extension of premises for an event to be held at their location on 2 East Passake Avenue on Saturday, June 10, 2023, with a rain date of June 11, 2023, from 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Thank you. The mayor's office has also submitted an event application for the 4th of July celebration on Franklin Avenue between Church Street and Chestnut Street from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM with a rain date of the next clear day. And the last one is, excuse me, Holy Family Catholic Church has submitted a letter requesting to hold raffles during their 31st Annual Italian Festival to be held on Sunday, September 24, 2023, from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM at 28 Brookline Avenue. Motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It is my pleasure tonight, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, to recognize Pride Month by reading this proclamation. Whereas the Nutley Board of Commission recognizes that the pursuit of equality, respect, and inclusion for all individuals is an attainable goal. Whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, and that no one should live in fear or face persecution and violence arising from sexual orientation or gender identity. Whereas the township of Nutley celebrates and encourages diversity and inclusion within our community. And whereas the LGBTQ+ individuals have had immeasurable impact and make vital contributions to our country, including cultural, political, civic, military, and economic, among many other fields. Whereas the Township of Nutley is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ+ people in our community. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ+ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination, biases, and prejudice. And whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite value and worth, and that human rights are protected under our US Constitution. And whereas the Board of Commissioners calls upon the people of this municipality to embrace this principle and work together to foster a warm and hospitable place for all to live. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for Nutley's LGBTQ+ community, and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build understanding and acceptance, and advance equal rights. Now therefore be resolved that the Nutley Board of Commissioner hereby proclaims the month of June 2023 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer questioning, and plus Pride Month throughout the Township of Nutley. Congratulations to everybody out there. Patrick. Patrick, would you like to come up and say a couple words?
So first I would like to say thank you and happy Pride Month, everyone. Today, I am Patrick Kazlak, the Executive Director of Nutley Pride.
And this is Angelica Madolo.
It's very nice to meet all of you.
Our Assistant Director of Nutley Pride. To our mayor and commissioners, thank you for your leadership tonight and to your commitment to the LGBTQ+ community. As we gather to celebrate Pride Month. Reminded of the courage, resilience, and love of the LGBTQ+ community. Tonight's Pride proclamation is a symbol of so much. It's a symbol of solidarity and the allies of our town and those who identify as LGBTQ+. Plus, they live in this town and it affirms their identity. Because I can assure you, we are here every day. We are the police officers and firefighters who keep you safe, EMS crews, the nurses and the doctors who keep you healthy in times of need and emergency. We are waiters and waitresses, baristas and cashiers at your favorite cafes and restaurants. We are bus drivers, crossing guards, mail carriers, teachers, and engineers. We are everything. But most importantly tonight, we are your neighbors, and we are your friends, and we are your family. For the LGBTQ+ community, Pride means courage. The courage to show up in the world that doesn't want you to show up. The courage that our previous living is saying enough, and to not live in the shadows or be passed aside. The courage to not be relegated to a second-class citizenship, but to fight for justice and equality. Pride means resilience. Our community has suffered, that's proof. We are lost. We have been knocked down. During the HIV/AIDS epidemic, we were scared, and we did not know when the next day, let alone the next week, would break, and we were surrounded by death. But what did we do? We survived. We fought for new medication for better vehicles. We organized. We marched and we spoke out. We demanded that our people would not be forgotten. And to those that we had a loss, whether it be through illness or violence. You are not forgotten. You are intimately woven into the fabric of our community and our country. Which brings me to love. Pride at its core means love. The ability to love us as ourselves as we are, not as we are expected to be. The bravery to love others loudly and boldly and to be unapologetic for it. The aptitude to show up for love, to show up for love for our friends and our family, be they blood or chosen families, for our town, for our neighbors, and understanding that love might not be reciprocated. I am here to underscore my commitment to keeping all LGBTQ+ people safe and to continue to stand up for equality, justice, and respect. In the last legislative session, 491 anti-LGBTQ+ bills have been introduced across the country. 491 in 22, 23. Thirty-five transgender people have been murdered simply for being who they were born to be. Lying in state healthcare is under attack for transgender individuals. So when I say I stand up for equality, respect, and justice, I am looking. Finally, today I'm grateful to. Be in this town, surrounded by commissioners and mayors and communities that love us. I am more grateful to my parents, who showed me unconditional love and acceptance. I am conversing how lucky I am to have had this experience, because without my parents, I would not be here today. So happy Pride Month, everybody, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Patrick. We have a... We'd like to present the proclamation, so Patrick and everybody else that wants to come up will take a picture. I would like to recognize Rhonda Froboz, who early on was a big advocate in getting us to move in this direction and have a proclamation in celebration of Pride Month. So Rhonda, thank you. I'd like to thank Commissioner Kelly and his committee on the diversity and inclusion for all their work. So, thank you. You're all welcome to stay and be bored by the rest of our meeting. Reports, Commissioner Evans?
Let's see, I have one. I don't, let's see. Yes, I have the code enforcement report for the month of April.
And I have various DPW reports. Let's move on to bills, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill list for June 8, 2023. Public Affairs, eighty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Revenue and Finance, two million eight hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-one cents. Public Safety, one hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred and five dollars and nineteen cents. Public Works, fifty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. Parks and Public Property, eight hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and five cents. Water Utility, one hundred and three thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. Payroll as of Friday, May 12, 2023. Regular payroll total, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-six cents. Overtime payroll total, forty thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Total payroll, nine hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-one cents for a grand total of four million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing none, let's move on to ordinance introductions.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Petracco has two. Want to read them, Commissioner Evans?
Sure. Ordinance number 3515, an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified the Code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter 228, entitled Vehicles in Traffic, particularly Articles 7, Special Zones, Section 29A, entitled Handicap Parking, to be added to the location set forth in the ordinance. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with a notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on July 6, 2023. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
3517, an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the Code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter 673, entitled Vehicles, impoundment and towing, particularly Article K, entitled Towing and Storage Fees, fee schedule to revise towing and storage fee schedules. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with a notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on July 6, 2023. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ordinance number 3516, this ordinance is a requirement of the New Jersey DEP. Ordinance for Adoption of the Flood Plane Management Regulations of the Township of Nutley. An ordinance by the Township of Nutley Board of Commissioners amending the Township of Nutley's Code of Ordinances to repeal, Chapter 349, Flood Damage Prevention, Articles 1 through 5, to adopt a new Chapter 349 Flood Plane Management Regulations, Articles 1 through 19, to adopt flood hazard maps, to designate a flood plane administrator, and providing for separability and effective date. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading, advertised in the Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on July 6, 2023. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting, we tabled our budget resolution regarding our amendment to allow time to do additional work to see if we can reduce our budget further. You recall that when we introduced the budget, initially, we were looking at a two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-dollar increase for the year 2023. After some rigorous work, we were able to reduce that number to a hundred and twenty-four dollars, and we tabled it in order to actually push harder to make sure that we can get this budget down. So having said that, we were able to reduce our budget by an additional four-hundred-thousand, three-hundred, three-hundred-thousand dollars. And in doing so, additional reductions were made in public safety as well as our legal expenses. So the amendment tonight reduces the annual increase to ninety-five dollars. So we're well under a hundred, which was our goal, to try and get there. So I will read this amendment tonight. We will have a public comment period on the amendment at our meeting in June, where we will adopt the amendment and then adopt our budget for 2023. Whereas the local budget for the year 2023 was approved on the 4th day of April 2023, where a public hearing on said budget was held and as advertised. And whereas it is desired to amend said approved budget, now therefore be resolved by the governing body of the Township of Nutley County of Essex that the following amendments to be, amendments to be approved and made into the budget for 2023. And it's for all of the accounts listed in this resolution. Be it further resolved, as two certified copies of this resolution be filed forthwith with the Office of the Director of Local Governmental Services for her certification of the municipal budget. So amended. Be it further resolved, that this complete amendment, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 48:9, 4-9, be published in the Herald News in the issue of June 16. And that said publication contain the notice of public hearing on said amendments to be held at Town Hall on the day of June 20, 2023, at 7:00 PM. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple resolutions on for this evening. The first is a resolution recognizing Flag Day. This is Resolution Number 12823. Whereas on June 14, 1777, a resolution of the Second Continental Congress, the United States Flag, was adopted. And whereas on June 14, 1777, the Second Continental Congress decreed that our nation's flag shall be thirteen stripes, alternate red and white, that the Union be thirteen stars, white, and a field of blue representing a new constellation. And whereas on June 14, 1916, President Woodrow Wilson issued a proclamation to officially establish observance of Flag Day. And whereas on August 3, 1949, National Flag Day, June 14, was declared by an act of Congress, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners and the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey recognizes and celebrates Wednesday, June 14, 2023, as Flag Day in the Township of Nutley. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
The next one I have on for this evening is Resolution Number 13123, to declare the month of June as Men's Health Month. Whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live on an average of almost five years less than women, with African-American men having the lowest life expectancy. Many of these deaths can be prevented by eating proper diets, exercising, getting regular health checks, including prostate examinations, whereas educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of a healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems will result in reducing rates of mortality from disease. And whereas mental health is one of the most stigmatized issues affecting men. And whereas Men's Health Week is celebrated each year as the week leading up to and including Father's Day, the purpose of Men's Health Week is to heighten the awareness of preventable health problems and encourage early detection and treatment of disease among men and boys. Whereas Friday, June 16, 2023, has been designated as Wear Blue Day, when individuals are encouraged to wear blue in an effort to raise awareness about the concerns surrounding men's health. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey recognized the month of June as Men's Health Month and the week of June 12 to the 18, 2023, as Men's Health Week, and encourage all male residents of Nutley to pursue preventative health practices and early detection efforts, so as to live longer and healthier lives, so as to continue to be positive influences in the lives of all those that they touch. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Sorry, I.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
The next one I have on for this evening is Resolution Number 13423. It's recognizing Post Traumatic Stress Disorder Month. Whereas post-traumatic stress disorder is associated with chemical changes in the body's hormonal system and autonomic nervous system and is characterized by symptoms including flashbacks, nightmares, insomnia, avoidance, hypervigilance, anxiety, and depression. Whereas despite its treatability, many cases of PTSD remain undiagnosed and untreated due to lack of awareness of this condition and the persistent stigma associated with mental health conditions. Whereas PTSD significantly increases the risk of anxiety, depression, suicide, homelessness, and drug and alcohol-related disorders and deaths, especially if left untreated. Whereas increased understanding of PTSD can help diminish the stigma attached to this mental health issue, and additional efforts are needed to find further ways to reduce this stigma, including examination of how PTSD is discussed in the United States and a recognition that PTSD is a common injury and is treatable and repairable. Whereas the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces who proudly serve the nation and risk their lives to protect our freedom are at an increased risk of suffering from PTSD, deserve the investment of every possible resource to ensure their lasting physical, mental, and emotional well-being. Whereas combat-related PTSD stress among our men and women in the Armed Forces is significantly pronounced, given that they are often exposed to highly traumatic events for weeks, months, and even years. Whereas between ten and thirty percent of service members will develop PTSD within a year of leaving combat, while others may not develop symptoms until years later. Whereas PTSD can result from any number of stressors other than combat, including rape, sexual assault, battery, torture, confinement, child abuse, car accidents, train wrecks, plane crashes, bombings, or natural disasters, and affects approximately eight million adults in the United States annually. Whereas one in thirteen people in the United States will develop PTSD at some point in their life. And whereas now more than ever, due to the trauma many victims, their families, first responders, and frontline workers have faced, due to the ongoing global health crisis, an emphasis needs to be placed on PTSD, mental health counseling, and treatment. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners and the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey recognize the month of June as Post Traumatic Stress Disorder Awareness Month. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners supports the entire medical community to educate members of the Armed Forces, veterans, frontline medical workers, first responders, all those who have been exposed to trauma, their families and friends, and the public about causes, symptoms, and treatment of PTSD. Be it further resolved that anyone who needs assistance with PTSD or anyone that knows someone suffering from PTSD is encouraged to reach out to the Nutley Department of Public Affairs for resources and guidance, or view the attached resources guide. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
I just want to say that the Board of Commissioners have been taking great strides to reduce the stigma. We declared a couple years ago now that the stigma associated with mental health is reduced by making Nutley a stigma-free town. Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
I have one more on for this evening. It's a quick one. One, Resolution Number 13923. Whereas on January 27, 2020, the Township of Nutley entered into a Uniform Shared Services Agreement with the Township of Montclair for public local health services. Whereas pursuant to New Jersey Statute's Annotated 26:3A2-12, the Township of Nutley is intentionally withdraw from the agreement effective December 8, 2023. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey. That this resolution so serve as a formal six-months notice pursuant to New Jersey Statute's Annotated 26382-12 with the Township of Nutley's intent to withdraw from the Uniform Shared Services Agreement with the Township of Montclair for public local health services effective December 8, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
You know, I realize I skipped Commissioner announcement, so let's stick with Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of events coming up this month. We have our A Unity Walk on June 14. We also have a screening of the film Milk in honor of Pride Month. For those of you who are not aware, Harvey Milk was the first openly gay elected official in the United States, and it's a film about his life. It's a biopic. There will be more information on the screening, when and where you can view that. And as many of you have probably noticed, it's a little hazy outside. Currently, we are being affected by Canadian wildfires. A lot of Canada is pretty remote and not very populated, and a lot of fires are raging in those remote areas. And so the smoke and haze is coming down from our northern neighbor, creating the haze, and it's a health issue for us, especially at risk, the young and young children, and the elderly, and those suffering from compromised health issues. So for the time being, we're recommending people stay indoors, if at all possible. And we foresee, at least what the reports are saying, is that it should lighten up this weekend, and hopefully by next week, there's supposed to be a change of direction in the winds, and it's going to blow the smoke back up to Canada so they can take it all back. So stay safe, and if anyone's experiencing any issues, as always, you can always contact the Public Safety Department by dialing 911, or if you need more information, feel free to reach out to the Public Affairs and Health Department.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Commissioner Evans?
Nothing. This summer festival? Okay. Nothing this evening.
The farmers market starts up June 18, Father's Day. So hopefully everybody come out and support our local farmers and vendors. We'll continue with resolutions. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one resolution this evening. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State of New Jersey that the treasurer be, and he is hereby authorized, and it's actually she, is hereby authorized to refund escrow monies for the land use applications in the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-two cents for the addresses, the trust accounts, and the individual escrow amounts listed in this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the Township Treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund escrow monies in the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci, will you read the Commissioner's? I would love to, Mayor. Whereas Township of Nutley, through the Nutley Police Department, has the need to acquire the services of an outside company for the administration and management of police off-duty details throughout the Township of Nutley. Whereas Hart Halsey LLC, doing business as Extra Duty Solutions, located at 101 Merritt Boulevard, Trumbull, Connecticut, has submitted a proposal indicating they will provide such services at no cost to the Township for one additional year. And whereas all fees will be paid directly to Hart Harley, extra-duty solutions by the third-party vendor, and whereas the term of this contract is not to exceed one year from the date of contract award. And whereas Hart Harley Extra Duty Solutions has completed and submitted a Business Entity Disclosure Certification, which certifies that said corporation has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit extra-duty solution partners from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey as follows. Contract shall be entered into between the Township of Nutley and Hart Halsey Extra Duty Solutions for the Administration and Management of Police Off-Duty Details. Be it further resolved, a copy of this resolution, as well as the contract, shall be placed on file with the Township Clerk. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. You're welcome. Resolution Number 13323, a resolution authorizing approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Nutley Coiman Avenue Improvement Project.
fiscal year twenty twenty-four. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. Whereas the Fourth of July, also known as Independence Day, is a national holiday celebrated annually, commemorating the adoption of the Declaration of Independence. And whereas the Township of Nutley and Observants of Independence Day will be hosting Fourth of July festivities and a firework display on or about Tuesday, July fourth, twenty twenty-three. And whereas Garden State Fireworks, Carlton Road, Millington, New Jersey, is the vendor performing the firework activities in the Township of Nutley. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the township authorizes the discharge and use of fireworks by its vendor on or about July fourth, twenty twenty-three, twenty-three, with the rain date for the next clear night. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. Whereas Rappel applications have been received from the following organization. Holy Family Church, license number forty-two, twenty-three, Carnival Games and Money Wheel, Thursday, September, September twenty-first through Sunday, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the application has been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved, and the municipal clerk is hereby authorized to issue said licenses. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. Before I read this next resolution on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, uh, I would like to turn it over to Commissioner Tucci and Commissioner Evans, who have worked on the ad hoc committee to get us to the point that we are, uh, informalizing what we've been doing for a long time. Commissioner Tucci?
Thank you, Mayor. We have, uh, we have, we have formed, this Board of Commissioners has formed an ad hoc committee to sit down and meet with the committee that was established by the Board of Education to discuss how we achieve educational excellence. And, you know, it's nice to talk about it. It's nice to say it, but there are things that you need to put in place to do that. All right? We are woefully, um, under, under, understaffed, if that's the correct word. Uh, we don't have enough classrooms. All right? We don't have enough space. All right? And the Board of Education has been working, uh, with, with its current leadership and this board, uh, for several months now to come up with different solutions as to how we can work together, all right? To bring our educational system up to where it needs to be. Now, we are already making strides in this area, and when the rankings are finally out, I believe one may already be out, and uh, superintendent may speak to that, or the board president in a little bit, uh, but we need to do even better. We need to make sure that, that our, our children are given the best educational experience that we can possibly afford. So we, we have decided, and we've been doing some of these things for quite a long time, that the best way to do this is to pool our resources. All right? We have had informal shared service agreements with the Board of Education, and we've been working cooperatively with them for many, many years. And I'm here twenty-four years. Commissioner Evans is here twenty-one years. I mean, we've all been here a long time, and we know what goes on, but we never really formalized, uh, the way we go about doing things. Commissioner Evans, I'm sure, is going to speak to what the formalization of these, uh, these arrangements are and how they will benefit us, but by, by introducing this resolution this evening, all right? We're making a statement as a board that we're committed to improving the educational experience of every child in the Township of Nutley, that we're looking to modernize and expand space for our children so that there is adequate facilities, so they can learn, class sizes can be smaller, and they can achieve as much as they, their potential will allow them to, and also how we continue to further, um, the excellence in our community programs. Now, we already share, uh, our pre-K program with the board. We use, uh, some of their classrooms. Uh, we use the Oval for several events. I mean, we use, we, we cooperate with fields and, and, and the high school sports and, and other things that are going on. Uh, so what the mayor did was create this committee, all right, and appointed Commissioner Evans and myself to serve on it with a group from the Board of Ed. Uh, and what we did was we spoke about how we go about doing this, how we go about bringing to light what we've been doing for years and how we maximize the potential of what our resources, when they're pooled together, can bring to this township. All right? Because anyone with at least a half a brain knows that the way the educational system goes in the township is the way the township goes. All right? We have, this is an outstanding place to live. We need to assure that the educational experience will continue to attract people into this township that are committed to the same ideals and the same family goals that we have. So we did things like, uh, drafting this resolution that the mayor will read on behalf of the board in a little bit. Uh, we started speaking about a shared user agreement. Uh, we started speaking about different projects that we can accomplish together, all right, at the lowest possible cost. All right? And we also spoke about some updates as to our pre-K program, which will save some of our, our young parents with young children thousands of dollars a year. How by improving the educational experience, when our children are ready to move on to higher education or a trade, that they're afforded every available opportunity, all right, to, to succeed? And how some of that, that the resources, all right, that we're putting in place now will benefit those families and those children. So we keep our premier Nutley students right here in Nutley, that every child gets the best education possible. All right? We, we spoke about, uh, additional sites for pre-K. Uh, we've gone over a multitude of, of different issues, and I, I would like to commend the leadership of the board, all right, for taking this initiative and the administration. All right? Because I believe this is the first time, at least in my twenty-four years here, that we've had this level of cooperation. All right? And the willingness to succeed. I mean, because when, when one, when one of us wins, that's good. When both of us win and the entire township, that's great. That's what we're supposed to do here. Okay? That's our responsibility, and this board is committed to doing that. And by introducing this resolution this evening, we are making that statement that we are committed to that. Commissioner Evans will fill you in on some of, uh, the financial aspects of this and some of the technical, um, aspects of, of how we're going to move forward and what we're planning on doing.
So, thank you, Commissioner. Um, a couple of things. Uh, we have been talking about the importance of having a top-notch educational system for the benefit of our children for a long time. Probably not my full twenty-one years, but a good portion of them, right? And we've, yeah, probably, probably eighteen, probably eighteen. There's, there isn't anything, you know, you know, in terms of the magic to understand is that, is that when you, uh, think about today's environment, which, uh, with advancements in curricula, right? Uh, curriculum is, is like, you're pretty advanced for, and it's down in the lower grade levels, right? So when you think about that, it means, uh, in order to make sure that our children are able to take advantage of that, you need a smaller classroom size. It's, it's, mechanics are more complex. Curricula that children need to have means more contact time by a teacher and the support, and you can't do that with the class sizes that were acceptable back when I was in school, when you had thirty-five kids in a classroom. Just not acceptable today. Uh, and we've been talking about the need to do that. Also, by not being able to get there, it also holds us back in our rankings. So it has a, a rating effect, uh, as well. In addition to that, you have, uh, the development of children today, and, you know, when you think about some of the influencers that are out there, especially, you know, the nature of technology and what that enables a child to do. Uh, when you, you, you set the curriculum aside for a moment, you also have the, you know, the social and emotional development of a child that has to have significant consideration. Uh, and when you think about our school system and its structure, we can do better. There's a lot we can do that will help children develop into, not only academically, but to, to develop into, uh, really successful, uh, adults that, uh, will help them compete in the twenty-first century, uh, that they're going up against. So we have to prepare them for that, and that's the work, that's the longer-term work that has to be done. But we can't do any of that, uh, without, uh, getting together and recognizing that, um, two organizations in the same town that actually have by law the ability to operate independently just can't do as much as, uh, we need to do if we do it separately. There's an, there's an opportunity and a need to think about what we can do jointly, and that's the basis of the discussions, uh, of the, uh, subcommittee. And, and I think, uh, one of the things I, I've noticed with the subcommittee is the, uh, uh, paramount level of trust and the mutuality of that trust that says, we need to do this, we want to do this, and we can. And so all of the conversations have been about how do we move forward? Uh, and, um, and I'm probably more on the impatient side. So, uh, whenever we meet, I'm, I'm pushing, let's go faster, let's go faster, let's go faster, because the opportunity is now. It's not sometime in the future. It's not something we need to prepare for, for the next three or four years. We need to do it now because we should have been doing it, uh, sooner than this. But we can catch up very, very quickly, uh, by working together. Uh, financially, uh, there are things that we can do from the standpoint of the Board of Commissioners that will assist the, uh, the school in being able to, um, advance their, their projects and address the needs of our students, their, their overall development. Uh, and I don't want to exclude the special need students as well, because it's very important that, you know, when I was in school, there wasn't any special need requirement. You know, they, back, back in my day, if a child be misbehaved in class, there were, there were a discipline problem. There wasn't a recognition of there might be some other factors, right, that, that go to that. So enabling the school to focus in on the academic things that need to be done, developmental things that need to be done for our children. While working together, we can advance and improve the infrastructure that enables that. Uh, then I think some magic can happen, and we can move forward very, very, uh, quickly. Uh, I have a great expectation, uh, around the fact that, uh, not only are we doing a resolution, that this resolution has, uh, a significant amount of momentum about, around it. Uh, it's my expectation that the, uh, memorandum of agreement that we're working on will be ready in time for our, our next meeting, and that we will actually be able to make visible progress, uh, this summer. And that we're all aligned on the fact that we're going to move forward to do whatever we can to start this process now. Uh, and, uh, and with that, I have, you know, um, a great sense of relief because I don't think it's, uh, this is something that we should be, uh, talking about. This is something which we should be held accountable to take action. And I think this board, uh, is fully aligned, the mayor, by agreeing to have a subcommittee on this, the board agreeing to have a subcommittee on this, uh, where there's a full alignment, uh, behind it, I think, uh, will enable us to make this, uh, reality. And I strongly believe that we should be held accountable to action against this. Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Tucci and Commissioner Evans, for your hard work. I would like to recognize the board members who are here tonight. Mr. Kozinski, Mr. Balsamo, Mrs. Quirk, President Ferraro, our superintendent is here. Thank you. Mr. DePisa's here. Thank you. So, Mr. Banyan, Mr. DePisa, thank you for your leadership there, and Board of Ed members, thank you for being here. Um, you know, I, I think this is an exciting moment for us to move this forward in a formalized way, uh, in a fiscally responsible way. And, uh, I'm, I'm just looking forward for us getting that written agreement on some shared services and how we can improve the facilities and the grounds and the rest of our, our buildings. So I don't want to leave Commissioner, uh, I don't want to Commissioner out. So, Mr. Kelly.
Uh, ju- just, just very, very briefly, I'm, I'm looking forward to this collaborative effort, uh, working with the, the both ad hoc committees and seeing what we can do, what we can bring forward, and, uh, basically educating, safeguarding, protecting, and developing our most valuable resource, and that is our youth. And I'm looking forward to seeing how we can do that and how we can achieve that.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, I will read this resolution on behalf of the entire board. Resolution authorizing the Nutley Board of Commissioners to enter into a shared service use agreement with the Nutley Board of Education to achieve educational facility excellence. Whereas the Township of Nutley and the Nutley Board of Education are committed to achieving high-quality educational instruction, facilities, and programs for the community. Whereas the Township and Board recognize that together, they can better meet the needs for educational, community events, and programs. And whereas the Township and Board have historically shared services, assisting each other in various governmental, uh, government, educational, and extracurricular activities. Whereas the Township and Board established an ad hoc subcommittee to formalize this relationship. And whereas the Township and the Board have concluded that both the educational needs of the school district and the community programs of the Township can be best served in more financially and fiscally responsible manner to the taxpayers of Nutley through the joint use, development, and sustainability of both board and township facilities. And whereas the Township and the Board are committed to improving the existing conditions of board facilities and to a lesser degree township facilities to expand and enhance their use for both the schools and the community. And whereas by example, the Township and Board have recently worked together to successfully complete an outdoor preschool playground for use by the Board's preschool program. And whereas the Township and the Board desire to work together to enter into a shared service use agreement in accordance with Uniform Shared Services Consolidation Act, NJSA forty, A, colon, sixty-five, dash, one, to provide for, among other things, the funding and development of board buildings, facilities, and fields to establish and memorialize and formalize the mechanism for joint use of said board facilities. Now therefore, we resolve that the Board of, Board of Commissioners hereby authorizes the ad hoc subcommittee to work with the Board of Education Subcommittee to establish and memorialize a shared service use agreement for the purposes outlined above. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. President Ferraro, or, uh? Yeah. Mr. Banyan?
Mayor, Commissioner, uh, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, I want to thank each of you for all your effort and time over the last six months working with our board to discuss. This resolution is the first one, the joint agreement that will implement solutions to benefit our school district and our community. Uh, special thank you to Commissioner Tucci and Evans, uh, for meeting and working for our, our ad hoc Subcommittee. Uh, we thank you for your insight and all of your knowledge. Um, I also want to thank my colleagues on the Board of Education, our administration, for all their efforts. Mayor, Commissioner, we look forward to continuing our work together, uh, together, we can resolve all the issues, I believe, that we, that, that Fisher Tucci and Mr. Evans mentioned before, uh, it's truly a team effort, and we thank you for taking this step.
Thank you, Mr. Ferraro.
Thank you.
Mr. Banyan?
I didn't prepare anything, but I just want to thank you. Um, this, this is a big moment for the schools and for the town, uh, right now. Uh, I want to thank you for trusting us and the educational community to follow through. I agree with Commissioner Evans. We want to be held accountable for this change, uh, for this growth in Nutley Public Schools. It's a big win for our students, our families, and our community. Thank you so much for your continued effort. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Banyan. And thank you, everyone who worked hard on this. Appreciate it. Uh, I think that concludes our business portion of the meeting. Although, we still have to open it up to the public.
Do we want to take a picture of this?
Yeah, we can take a picture, sure. Let's take a picture together.
It's an historic event. Let's take a photo.
What we, what we have is, uh, Madam Clark, uh, want to read the, uh?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concern should approach the microphone and state their name. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person should limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed by the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Yeah, good evening. Carmine Alessio, eighty-one East Center Street. Uh, fortunately, uh, Commissioner Petraco isn't here. I wanted to direct a question at him, but we just as well may just put it on the record. Um, I want to know, I'd like to know why, um, there's wrecked cars in my neighborhood parked on the street. Uh, the cars have no doors. Uh, they're damaged and there's oil spill on the street. Um, uh, unfortunately he's not here to defend it, but like I said, we're going to put it on the record. Uh, there's one hour parking there, so I, I just you, I don't understand how, you know, or why, other than maybe there's some campaign finances involved here. Um, you know, we had plenty of meetings and talks about the issue uh, throughout the years and it just is not getting better. Recently, a couple of weeks ago, I had a meeting with, um, Deputy Chief Jerry Green and Lieutenant Patterson regarding, uh, this, this problem. And that's ongoing. And, uh, at the meeting, I, I pretty much asked the Deputy Chief Green to draw up police reports and incident reports that I've made uh, with my concerns and believing there are a lot of them reports, a real lot. And he seemed to not, maybe he may have seen one or two of them and, and that's basically, basically it. Um, the street because of it is, it, it, there's a park right across the street and right there. There are now, and there's children frequenting the neighborhood, going into the park, walking to school. And it, it's a detriment and it's just beyond my wildest dreams why these people are allowed to do it at the body shop. Now, what stems from that is because it's, it, 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 it looks like a, a mess down there. Um, to the left of me is seventy-five East Center Street. And it is so out of hand with the property used there. There's contractors from Newark that just frequent the area that are renters. And there's no way that that, it's not legal. The variance is completely turned around as to what it's supposed to be. There's no site plan there. It was never, you know, brought about, which is, that's in the Nutley Code Book. You have to have a site plan and revu- plan and revitalization. You have this property. You can't just do what these people are doing. Now, what comes out of this is dumping, which I've worked with, um, code enforcement, uh, Dave Barry, and he claims that it's getting better. Well, that's a matter of opinion because what it has created is, uh, day workers coming down there. Uh, uh, there, there's no bathrooms there. It's, it's kind of like a zoo, okay? Yeah, this is not Nutley that I know. This is not what I bought into thirty-five years ago and was reluctant to, to conform and to, and well, actually reluctant to, um, to, to kind of like make my business part of that area because of, of all the actual corruption with the body shop parking, with who's doing this, who's dumping, who's doing that. Just like left it alone. Now, these people come up and down the street like that. They, uh, day workers. And they're using the lot, like frequenting it with like ten, fifteen pickup trucks coming in the lot, exchanging equipment, picking up equipment. The bad part about it is, I'm going to wrap this up.
No, that was five minutes, Mayor.
The bad part about it is, um, there's crime down here and it's, it's just not like the way the zone is supposed to be. Now.
Wrap it up, Mr. Alessio.
I requested a, a video of that meeting. Lieutenant, uh, Patterson and Jerry Green, and I've yet to see that video or get it. I, I, it's old red and it's taken forever to get. So, you know, uh, thanks for, for hearing this out. I hope that maybe the noise would cease to end six-thirty in the morning with the crashing of bricks and all of these migrant workers and people like that coming up and down the street. They were actually seen hopping over my fence, my alleyway fence by the neighbors. I wasn't there. But this is what is happening because of the situation. It's not getting better. And I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Alessio. Anybody else wish to adjust the Board of Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, uh, address Mr. Alessio briefly. Uh, Mr. Alessio, uh, I'm not unsympathetic to your, your issues. I used to live over, off of East Center Street for two years. Uh, and, and I'm familiar with some of the issues you, you've raised here tonight. However, I, I did want to address that I've now worked with Commissioner Petraco for, uh, a little over three years now, and I've known him to be a dedicated, honorable public servant. And to suggest that there's something untoward or improper with, with how he's handling the, the Public Safety Department, uh, without any support, I don't think is, is warranted. He's definitely been a, a great steward of, of the, the Police Department. Uh, and I don't think that there's anything untoward. He, he's definitely beyond reproach and someone who cannot be bought. And, uh, I, I don't think it, it's beneficial for anyone involved, either you, the body shop or the Public Safety Department to, to lodge, uh, accusations like that. Uh, so I just wanted to a- address that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else wish, Mr. Alessio, you're done. No, it's not a, it's not a, it's not an exchange. Anybody else wish to adjust the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none, uh, guess we have a, uh, a need to go into executive. For Mr. Bruno?
Yes, sir. Litigation and contract negotiations.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. Whereas Section Eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one Public Law nineteen seventy-five permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the, uh, public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley moving to close executive session to discuss contract negotiations and litigation. Be it further resolved at the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. Will there be no further action taken? I'll need a motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
The time is seven fifty-nine.
Good night, everybody.